Today is Wednesday, February the 5th, 2014. Time of 10:00 AM, meeting in Long Island County Commissioners called to order. Last, if you please, will rise from over silent meditation, main standing for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any exonerations today. We do share orders of paperwork five and the fourth quarter status report by Lynn Crane. Vouchers, General County Fund, 188,005, 5661. Cole Severance, 32,39174. 911, 28932. Home Confinement, 10,005, 6418. Mason Basin Park, 55262. Teen Court, 10,0087314. For total of 243, 22831. And there's one budget revision for the Circuit Court's office, moving $7,000 from 450 up until 108.
Move for approval.
Second, I do have a question. Are we approving the fiduciary order for, um, was it's, uh, can I have that for a second?
Which one?
For the Scotchel.
I didn't think, did we state that? Did we approve that?
Is this in?
It's here for four approval, from George Armstead.
We should separate that out.
Yes, we'd like, I like.
Let's move on this one here first. This is one Lynn Crane.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to approve this?
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of.
Okay, as long as that's not in it, then.
We'll leave the estate stuff out.
Okay, yes. Then I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. I'll pay with signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and I move that we approve the fiduciary status report for Lynn Crane.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now the estate of Arthur Scotchel.
Yeah, there seems to be some confusion on that report. We specifically asked, well, I'll refer to Mr. Bartol because you're the one who brought it to our attention. Go ahead.
Well, if you recall, the last time when we, we had a hearing here regarding that estate, and some of the areas were here, and there was attorneys involved, and it's a complicated case, but one of the things we asked for was a full accounting of all assets. More specifically, there was a question raised about some buildings that were sold with deeds of trust on them, and we were told that there's $300,000 in escrow.
Right.
But it's not reflected in this report. If that's an asset of the estate, then it should be reflected in that report, and it's not. And I, I mean, absent that information, I don't know how we can approve that report.
I, yeah, I would request that we send a letter requesting why that isn't part of the report. We specifically made, well, we made it clear, though, we at least wanted it added to explain, and it's left out, and I think we need to know why, but go ahead.
I was just gonna say, given the fact that this was a major issue, there was a number of people here saying, well, this is adequate, this isn't adequate, this, I mean, it's just logical to me that when you break the report, you say, well, this is what's supposed to be in here. Now, as to the other things that you ask about, these are not supposed to be in here, but here they are, blah, 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 blah. So whether that's supposed to be in the report or not supposed to be in the report.
We should have.
This commission asks for a full accounting of everything that went on in that estate to date, and we have yet to, to see, and our, our request for that is not, not implying that anyone did anything wrong. All we're saying is, is that the issue is brought before us about all aspects of this estate, what should be in, should not be in, what should be accounted for, so if there's any exclusions in there, there should be an explanation of why it's excluded in a separate report. So I, I can't, I can't approve, because it doesn't match with what we ask for, and I think we're entitled, we're entitled for a complete explanation before we approve.
Right. So I'll move that we write a letter requesting that information.
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Renetta here?
No, she had, there's a two-hour delay, she was putting herself on the bus.
Okay. Bob.
Have kids been in school at all this week?
No.
No, today's two.
One and a half days, basically, in three weeks.
Put it down. Just put it down.
That way?
No, no. Here, this is the best one.
Us?
Yeah. No, not me, I got one.
Is that better, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
The kids, the kids are shuffling in even as we speak.
Oh, great.
We wanted to come down and express our gratitude for being invited to be a part of Montague County. It was, it was really an honor for us, and we were really proud to be, to be a part of that event. It was really a good feeling to walk down the halls of, of the House offices, and every place I looked in, they were eating a lunch from Pace. They were the London of Montague County, and we, we were grateful, and I brought along some of our folks so that you could, you know.
Please introduce.
First hand, this is Sam Snyder, who heads our vocational services department. I'm gonna let Sam introduce the rest of his team, because I was just ornamental on this deal. I just kinda stood around and took credit for it. These, these are the folks that really did the work.
Bob used the word ornamental. I feel the same way. I'm, I'm the director of vocational services. Kim Dalton is our trainer. She does the training in her kitchen. Mike McMahon is our kitchen manager. Scarlett Basil, she's one of the trainees, and we have Matt Crest, too. He helps prepare the meals. So I would like to thank them, and of course, thank Bob, too, for, for bringing us over here, and thank you all.
We really appreciate it, and, and I, I just wanted to say that, uh, the, the meals were great, got a lot of compliments on, on, um, from a number of delegates, not even from Montague County, said that we're eating better today than we usually eat in cafeteria, you know, so I'm not knocking the cafeteria down there, but they, they just was very pleased, and I was very pleased that, uh, that you took them down, they got a chance to see the place, and hopefully do it again next year.
Yeah, it'd be awesome.
I don't know who, who, who takes care of the money. Do I have a check here?
I'll, I'll leak to my feet.
You're not ornamental for that?
You should've run George, George for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the other thing I'll say is, informally, Sam and I have been working on the annual report for Pace for the year 2013. We made you proud. We're not, we're not ready to release the report yet, but just let me say, you're gonna be proud of what Pace accomplished in Montague County last year.
I think you also found something that I've been going down to for the last 36 years, down to the legislature, and I think you found the key, which was food. We've never, I, I cannot believe we had the entire legislature, because they, they were running out of time, had to come in, they got the food, then they sat with us, and they were very appreciative, and I'll tell you, we really hope that we can do this next year, and we want to thank all of you. I, I think it was a special moment, and it really made Montague County proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to get a picture?
Sure.
Come on up. Everybody, come on up. Just stand in front of the chair, and we'll stand.
Yeah, you just stand right along here. Bob, you, you better get in this picture.
Yeah, get the ornamental people on the side.
We did good enough on lunch, Chris, that we all have said.
Oh, really? Wow.
Close enough?
You needed a couple on this side, him.
Come this way?
He moves in, Bill, I can see, Ellen.
Everything okay?
All right. Take one more. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure enough. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it next year.
We're ready. We're ready.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Letter from Bob Music requesting funding.
This is for the suicide prevention program, council for prevention of suicide. Bob Music had sent a letter in to the commission. This was discussing work session. He's asking for $5,000 for the program.
Yeah, we discussed, last week, or week before last, I guess, we, in our work session, we discussed that request, and it's my understanding that the Board of Education reconsidered and gave him a contribution as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and we talked about approving his request for $5,000 funding, because he, he did receive a budget cut, and, and it's a necessary program for, in the schools and the community as well. Suicide prevention is an unfortunate situation, but he does a tremendous job with that program. So I would entertain the motion to approve.
Move approval.
Approval for $5,000.
Yes, I wanted to emphasize that in our conversation, there, there's a lot of adult services he also provides, in addition to what he included in the letter, is schools. And I was glad to hear that the, the schools, because what we, what we had talked about was to ask the, the schools to match us dollar for dollar, but I don't know, if they've already done it, then we'll just give our $5,000 and let it go, so I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And finished business. First reading of an ordinance. You gonna read that, Diane?
I'm gonna read by title.
Yeah.
By title, and then we will be setting a date for a public hearing and second reading on February the 19th.
Okay. When's the public hearing, February 19?
February 19.
At what time?
At 10:15. We'll do that by motion.
You need a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
This is the, the first reading by title, the ordinance authorizing and approving the acquisition, construction, and clipping of a Montague County Justice Center, releasing of the Montague County Justice Center by the Montague County Building Commission, the issuer, to the County Commission of Montague County, the County Commission, pursuant to a lease agreement. The execution and delivery of a lease agreement by the appropriate officials of the County Commission. The execution and delivery of certain agreements, documents, and other matters regarding the issuance by the issuer of its lease revenue bond, Series 2014A, Montague County Justice Center.
So we just approve that? First approved.
First reading.
First reading.
Just for informational purposes, could we have a list of the members of the building commission, just so in case someone would call, just so it's on, on the record that we at least have the, the three names?
Yeah, well, it was on, it was on the email, but do you have them there?
We have a list, we give it to the building commission, we can get you that.
Yeah, that would be fine, just in case someone calls, just so they, if anyone has a question, okay.
Do you want all the certificates all served, or just a list?
No, just, just the list that has your name, so in case anyone calls, so we can say who, who's on the commission. Thank you.
We don't need a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
No, it's no.
It's just a request, yeah.
Okay, we move on to, uh, release a bid bond to Landscape Plus. Bobby?
And for all the paid in. For the blacktopping that, yeah, the ones that did the bid on the, on the Justice Center parking lot, um, the, the, it's been, the paving has been completed, and the unsuccessful bidder did not get their bid bonds returned to them, and they called and asked if we could release them, and I talked to Janet, I think it was only two, wasn't it, Janet? So for all of them, there's, because it's paid in.
Well, you want both released?
Yeah, we're gonna have to release both of them, because the, the project's done and paid.
Can we release Barada without it being on the agenda?
Can we?
Sure, it's just a.
It's just a release of the bond.
So you want a motion to release Landscape Plus and?
For all the paid.
For all the paid and.
Bonding for the project, down, it's already complete.
On their bid bonds for a complete project. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
One matter that we need to go back to the ordinance, it does need to be approved by motion, and Tom Ammon has some other information he needs to discuss with you on that.
Okay, you want to give us that information before we entertain the motion?
Just relating to the ordinance, um, there will be a deed of trust, of course, on the Justice Center building to secure repayment of the bond, and as part of, you know, the security for the real estate, we need title insurance on that deed of trust, with respect to that deed of trust on the, on the building. So, you know, relating to the ordinance, I need an approval to hire, if, if you want to, Steptoe and Johnson as the title agent to go ahead and do the, the title work relating to the Justice Center, issue the title insurance policy.
Is that someone other than Jones Stump? I mean, wait, I'm, I'm confused.
That's okay.
How many lawyers we need on this?
Well, it's, you could, what I'm saying is, Steptoe is acting as bond counsel for the project.
Okay.
And counsel to the County Commission. But relating to the sale of the bonds, there, there will be a requirement to have title insurance on, on the Justice Center. So a title agent will have to issue that title insurance policy, and what I'm, what I'm saying is.
So it means another firm can do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't do real estate work, but we have people in the firm that do.
Oh, okay.
Act as title agents and, and handle this type of work.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to express is, we'll need a title agent for the project, and also, with respect to the title insurance policy, one of the requirements will be to have an ALTA survey to remove the survey exception from the policy. So I need authority to, or consent or direction to hire a surveyor, the County Commission, to hire a surveyor to do an ALTA spec survey for that facility, so that we can remove that exception from the title policy.
Okay, so.
You need two.
How many, how many motions you need? What, one of the ordinance and?
Yeah, I need one with respect to the title insurance, to hire a title agent.
Okay.
Second, to hire a surveyor.
Okay.
And then third, with respect to the ordinance.
Okay. Well, we approved the first reading. Was there something more we need to approve on this ordinance?
What I actually need you to do is take a motion and a second to put it up for a vote to adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Okay, that's what I thought we just did. What did we just do?
Set the public hearing date by motion.
Okay.
Oh, that was public hearing date? I thought we were doing both in the same motion, but we need separate motion? All right. I, I'll move that we approve the ordinance as to first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, then I move to, uh, to hire Steptoe and Johnson to do the title information and search.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Move to hire a surveyor as required.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up.
New business. You have any grand information?
Just have a certificate of completion for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for Main Street Morgantown. The project, the grant funds were $12,000. They actually spent $16,983.79.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signature if I'm saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Is that it, Renetta? New business. Any new business? Reports from county commissioners. Ellen.
Snow's been interesting this year.
The slush is more interesting.
Yeah, I, I can't believe how many, how many different meetings I, I've had to, had to cancel, canceled because of the snow, so I really, I really don't have anything.
Cool. Okay, couple things. I, I would like to put on a work session, it could either be this one, this afternoon, or in a week, the possibility of the, the commission considering, I will call it a statement of fact, that would support not having a median built up on the mile ground, and I would like to discuss that. I believe we need to at least discuss that. Um, I know in March, the DOH will be coming back with the recommendation, but I think things have changed in the last two years, and I'd like to just discuss that in discussion phase.
Discuss here, or now?
Well, during a work session.
Right now, or during work session?
During a work session, that way we're being, you know.
Let me just suggest, if you intend on the, the commission voting or a resolution, we ought to put it on our formal agenda.
Okay, then, and put on, yes, on the agenda, too, so we'll discuss.
We can discuss it in work session preliminary.
Yes, that would be great.
My, uh, my, my only concern is, we're not jumping ahead of the DOH's recommendation.
Well, that's one, that's one of the concerns that, that we'll talk about, because when they made that first decision, they didn't have all the information, and we're now going by what was a decision that was made without all the information, and that's my concern. So I like to talk about it at the work session.
Okay, but, but, but part of what we're gonna talk about is the lack, the lack of complete information.
Exactly.
I, I don't, I don't want to turn around and take the opposite view with the lack of complete information also.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. You're right. The second thing is, I'm wondering if we can, when we meet down the road with the meeting of all the cities and the counties, you, you brought up a good, you brought up a good point about the roads and DOH, and again, this is nothing against the hard workers and individuals who are out there 24 hours a day clearing the roads, but it's, but we need to rethink the situation, whether it's to consider, um, the legislature allowing county commissions the possibility of hiring private contractors, I'm just throwing that as an idea, of how we can clear the major arteries. And I think we need to think out the box, because this past week has just not been, for whatever reason, whether it's not enough money or what, and I just think it's something we need to look at as a county, and we could all discuss that, because I believe all of us are in the same boat. Um, the money doesn't have it, so just to put that on the agenda. Yes, that would be great. And then the third thing was, I was fortunate to attend the WVU baseball kickoff dinner, and I just want to publicly say that I've never met a more class, classiest group of students, individuals, and coaches who represented our community, and I hope that we, I have some ideas that maybe we can do, working with them, when we talk with Oliver Luck, but I just want you to know, it was an honor to say that they are WVU baseball players and represent Montague County. The things that they have done and the tribute, it was something that you need to see, and they have a video of what they did in Oklahoma, and then brought the individual whose house they cleaned up, and then brought in there, and he got to speak, and just spoke for what it was like for the residents, and what they thought of WVU and West Virginia people, and it was just a, a real moving situation, and I know we always have a lot of negative things always said about WVU and athletes, and this was just first class, and I was honored to be there. Thank you.
You mentioned roads, and I, and I've just got a thought that I want to share with the commission, and it's almost like a revelation that we have two entities in this county that has sort of a bottomless pit, so to speak, in terms of public funding, and I really never gave it much thought until recently, when the MMPO's thinking about how we can raise funds to, to repair roads, the state's looking at a 1% tax on sales, and, and those people who know me know that I'm a proponent of no new taxes. Look at how we're spending our money before we start increasing taxes on, on the taxpayer of this county. And, and I just want to give you this food for thought, maybe we ought to put this on the work session, is that it's beyond our control on these, probably these two entities, but there's nothing that says we couldn't start an initiative, because the state is, seems to be wandering blindlessly on how to raise money to, to repair roads, and in line with, let's look at how we're spending the tax dollars before we put in new taxes. The Board of Education, Montague County is a growing county. There's a lot of new construction, property taxes are going up, as we all know, and, and the Board of Education has no limit on what they get as terms of county tax dollars, and most people don't understand that they get the bulk of our county tax dollars. And unfortunately, we experienced this past year where there was an increase, I think we were told it was something like $3.8 million, that was just absorbed in their budget, with no addressing of the levy or the excess levy, which was imposed upon the taxpayers, by vote, of course, but I'm not real sure taxpayers fully understand all the issues. I think they need to understand this issue, that, and I mentioned this to WVU, they talked about, I went to a meeting on this campus, LLC, and they talked about taxes and paying taxes and how to benefit the county, and for people to recognize that, that that's what they were going to do, and, and I made the point, oh, people will never see that, the Board of Education will consume it and spend it on something else, and the people of this county will never see any benefit in that payment of taxes. That's one area I think we need to address, and we need to talk about it. The other one is the Convention and Visitors Bureau. There is no limit. They get 50% of the tax dollars. There's motels and hotels plans to build more of them. As far as I know, I don't know where the accountability is. I mean, if you, if, if you want to have a tax and spend, you can do that, but while other people are trying to tighten up their budget belts, we have other people that are saying, oh, we have more money to spend. I think we need to address those issues. That's a good bit of money. I think the, the Convention and Visitors Bureau now, I think, gets around a third of a million dollars, close to it.
I don't know.
And, and I just think those are two areas that, when you really look at the management of public funds and, and fiscal responsibility, and you say you have two entities that have a bottomless pit and can spend all the tax dollars that they want without accountability, there's something wrong with that procedure. And I just think we need to address that as well. And if we need to go to the legislature to bring it to their attention, I think we need to do that.
Just the lack of, like you said, you couldn't make your meetings, the lack of productivity, it isn't just the school system that was off, and I think that's what people need to understand. You know, the businesses couldn't, you know, we're not, it, I don't understand what happened, but you know, we've had other snowstorms, and we've been able to make it through, and, and things just didn't seem to work as well this year. I don't know if it was the timing of the storm, whether it was that we don't have enough money from the legislature that's providing the workers to run the plows, I do not know, but we need to re, we need to think out of the box now, because we can't continue this.
I heard on the, I think it was on the news, and I was also told by someone, I don't know how accurate this information is, Ben, you may know better than I, but I was told that they have 27 plow trucks and only two drivers, and that they're having, they're having trouble hiring drivers for the trucks.
That's.
Yeah, but, uh, we're still paying unemployment benefits. It makes you wonder of why we don't have 10 or 15 people that need jobs, that would take a job.
I just wanted to add that I think it's essential that County Commission talks about these things. What we do, or what we decide to do, is, is something that people expect us to decide, we decide in open forum, and we talk about it, and I, and I think it's, it's refreshing to me to hear both commissioners say, I see a problem, let's talk about it, let's see if we can't fix that problem. That is, that is just, that just makes me feel good. I'll, I'll be going down to Charleston. I'll be going down to Charleston again with the Association of Counties this weekend. I'll be talking to them again. That was interesting. That was something that I brought up with our delegation down there, is about the monies being spent at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that shouldn't some of that money be geared towards roads, because you're not going to have visitors if you don't have roads for people to get in and out. They're, like anything, there's some people that take something and they jump, oh, no, no, you can't do that, but let's talk about it. I think it's so important to talk about it, and I think people know that you and I, there's three of us actually, that you and I have been over the last three years, very much on the same page when it's about increasing taxes. I mean, you've got to have accountability for it. And then, I don't believe in increasing taxes. I believe in investing money. You've got to get a return, you've got to get a return on what's being spent. Too much, too much is spent already at all levels of government, and we don't see a return on it. So, how do we address that? Just what you said, we put it on the agenda, we talk about it. We put it on the work session, we talk about it. And if we come to consensus, then we need to adopt resolutions. And you know, you can send me, I'll go down to Charleston, I'll carry your message, I've done it many times.
I know that full well. Well, I don't think, I don't think we should have a defeatist attitude, if, you know, I think we are encumbered with the responsibility of representing the best interests of the people in Montague County. And when we see something that could be better or potential improvement, I agree. I think we need to discuss it, and if warranted, I think we need to send a resolution, and we need to get to the people that make those laws. I mean, times are changing, you know, the state's searching, and obviously hasn't come up an answer, with an answer for roads, you know. We sure came up with a quick fix on the lottery and added a dollar to the price of it, and there wasn't a, to my knowledge, there wasn't one bit of reaction to that. One dollar, a ticket was added, and no reaction. But then, there was also no information of where the money was going to go.
That's the downside.
So, it makes you wonder, you know, these, these roads, I mean, we can't wonder aimlessly. I mean, the state has pretty much said to us, you know, local governments have to fund the roads, or we have to participate, or the taxpayers have to participate. Well, if we can take 10% from some existing budgets that are additional unexpected funds and establish a road fund, and add to that, and counties contribute part, I mean, we can contribute part of our lottery proceeds. We get about $207,000. Well, they're going to take 15% of that, but it's not going for roads. So, even if we gave another 10%, and gave $25,000 a year and put it in a road fund, with 10% from the Visitors Bureau, 10% from the Board of Education, we can establish a pretty good sized road fund. I think we need to think that way, and it won't cost the taxpayers one extra cent.
And finally, I want to just add, I think this is the perfect time to do it, because in the past, and I hate, hate the word, it's enabling legislation, and I learned that when I was in city council, when basically, we're the only state in the country that if it isn't written in law, then we can't do it, whereas in the other 49 states, if it's not written, then you can come up with options. So, I think right now, the legislature is at a point where they realize they can't fix all the problems. They don't have the money, they don't have the answers, and I really think that's why there's a lot of opening doors right now of some ideas of modifying the enabling legislation, whether it's home rule or whatever, to give the areas the choice and the options to try and resolve their own problems. And I think this will be a perfect time, and I think we're not the only county, I know other counties are starting to talk about it, and I think after that massive report by on the transportation, it clearly stated that the legislature can't resolve it, we need other issues. So, I think this is a perfect time to start looking at this, and Montague County, I want to continue to move forward, and maybe we need to, you know, as the community, come up with our own answers.
Tom, I appreciate that, and I just throw this one last thing in. Because you were with, we were together with a group of other people, and I carried that message to every minority and majority leader, to the delegation, and to the governor's office, to his staff, that the solutions to Montague County's problems have to start here in Montague County. They cannot come up with a plan that's going to solve the problems of Montague County, and Workinworth County, or Lincoln County. They've got to enable the counties and give us what I talk about, a full toolbox, that we can utilize that which is best interest of the people of Montague County. Preston County can do what's best for them, Work County can do what's best for them, they can use, but the decision making needs to, they need to trust the county commissioners, and the decision making needs to be as close to the people as possible, because the people will support if they know, paying a buck or whatever, if they know.
Exactly where it's going.
Where it's going to go, and they know it's going to end someday.
Right.
So, you know, all these, all these factors are significant.
Enough said.
That's it.
Diane, anything else? Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Renata? James?
Yes, sir.
Ben? Comments from the public? Please stand and state your name and address.
Elected official.
Oh, elected officials. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
I'm lost, because no, we don't have anything.
Well, you know, we see you frequently enough, you know, you're not unusual, and I'm not going to go into history and say about how unusual it was for the successor to be here, but we see you quite frequently.
You didn't mention that.
And we appreciate that, too. Chief?
No, not today. Thank you.
Right.
Granville Backyard and Corner?
No, sir.
Okay, now, the public. Mr. Settler?
For the record, Charles, South 470 Ohio Avenue in Westover. I originally came with one topic, but I now have two, and I'll start with the latest one. Commissioner Blume is under the impression that West Virginia is the only state in the nation that operates on a system of enabling legislation. Translating to, you only have those authorities that are provided to you by the legislature. I would suggest that for the edification of all the commissioners here, you get hold of your National Association, which has done quite a bit of writing about this, and ask for the latest information they've put out on Dillon's Rule. I'll tell you briefly what I know about it. It is a doctrine that began with a federal judge by the name of Dillon, and evolved into the system of enabling permissive legislation that you just mentioned. The last time I read that information from the Association of Counties, West Virginia had 38 or 37 other partners in observing Dillon's Rule. And to my knowledge, there's been no legislation that has changed that, so you might want to take a look at that and factor that into your thinking.
Okay.
Okay, now, the thing that originally brought me here, having read what the Dominion Post has had to offer on Mecca's need for more money, wouldn't you know that just a couple of days after that, I got two bills in the mail, one from my landline provider, and the other from my cellphone provider. Now, my memory of this whole thing was, and I was around in this room quite a bit when it all began, the, there were people or folks, companies contracted with by this commission, or reaching an agreement, or whatever you want to call it, under which they collected the fee for you, and retained a rather small percentage of the fee for doing so. But I got a look at my cellphone and landline bills just yesterday, and my landline provider bills me for $1.31. But my cellphone provider, in the same category, on their bill, bills me for a flat rate of $6. That means that I'm paying that cellphone provider $4.69 to collect for you $1.31. Has the, has the method of agreement or contract, or whatever the nature of the document is, changed to permit flat rates to be billed by cellphone providers to customers in this county? Where did a flat rate come from? How did it get on my cellphone bill? Now, as far as I know, it's the only provider that's doing that, but I don't have information on all of them. So, the question becomes, if you boost the bill, your bill, is my cellphone provider going to boost its bill? And how much will I be paying my cellphone provider then? The cellphone provider is one who serves AARP members, which I became a long, long time ago, and, you know, so they're an affiliate. Do you have a contractor agreement with that company? And does it provide for them billing a flat rate, which is three times, paying them three times the amount of the fee they collected for you?
That is certainly a legitimate question. I'm not, but I don't know the answer right now. Does anyone?
I don't know the answer, but I'll have to look at it to verify, but my understanding, the cellphone fee is set by the legislature, not by the county commission. That's the difference, because all the, all the cellphone money goes to Charleston, and then they divvy it up, but we don't, the legislature is the one that sets the cellphone fees, so I don't know, I don't know how much of that is the fee they collected and what they, what they, the provider charges.
Well, I've brought the bills with me, if you care to see them.
Yeah, well, what I was going to say is, the legislature sets cellphone, cellphone, the residence is the only thing that we have any jurisdiction under. Is that great, Diane?
Yeah, Public Service Commission is involved with that cell phone fee, and they do collect the money and distribute it. So, it's a different fee than what the commission approved with the $1.31 we did years ago.
I thought it was important that I bring this information to you, so you can factor it into what you're considering now.
If you have a cellphone in Canawha, if you have a cellphone in Montague County, you're going to pay the same thing.
Didn't start out that way.
Right. But for residential, Canawha, they pay $4, and we only pay $1.31, you know, so that's the difference. But it'd be interesting to figure out what the legislature's doing with that.
I'd also like to find out, you know, and I'll check on it, you said $6 fee, what is that fee actually for? Is it for 911, or is it for a number of different things?
It is, appears on the bill as E911 fee.
Okay.
And then, a sub entry of flat rate. So, apparently, apparently, that's what they charge anybody and everybody for collecting a 911 fee.
Well, what I'd like to find out is, okay, if that's what it's, and how, and we can find out how it's distributed, I think that's a legitimate question.
But those are the only ones that are registered, unless you're due.
Right.
The 25,000 students at WVU that have cellphones registered in other states, they don't pay.
And that's what we are looking at as the county commissioner, which I can tell you, we have already contacted WVU to start negotiations and discussions about how we can get some way of getting, if not a pill.
Some sort of emergency.
Some sort of funding.
Emergency fee.
Well, a number of years ago, I wrote extensively about whether or not youngsters living in those dorms who've got 911 access never paid a fee, and whether or not that amounted to equal protection or not.
You bring up an interesting point, I just want to say that I was also told at the last meeting of the discussion, that there's supposedly only six lines that the university pays in those dorms.
It's a Centrex system.
Centrex, but everyone has the opportunity of using the phone, so there's a question now, should they be paying that fee? So, that's something I can tell you, we will definitely be looking into it.
Tom, just to not confuse anyone, the universities take apart all those phones out.
Yeah.
Not at the dorms.
How long have they been there?
They've.
Oh, they're not there anymore?
They've removed all those phones. Everyone's got cellphones, they ganked all those phones out.
But for a lot of years.
Yes, they did.
They had access and.
No, you're right.
Any four.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, sir. That's it.
Thank you.
Blessing.
I think we do appreciate you bringing up a point that has looked into, and we will look into it.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
One minute.